Good evening, November 27th at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Harwich Planning Board. This meeting will be recorded and taped as required by law. The town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this session is required to inform the Chair. So, are you recording anything, fellas? Okay. All right, so we'll get going with the first of the public hearings, PB 2018-37, Osprey Landing LLC owner, care of John Demarest, PLS representative Keith Lavalley applicant. So...
Oh, you do need to read the whole thing because you're opening the hearing.
Read the whole, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
So you're seeking approval for a rescission plan as set forth in Mass. General Code, C. 41, Section 81.K-GG, and Chapter 400-11.C., Article 2 of the Town Code. The request is to rescind a portion of the private road between 3 and 4 Belmont Avenue as shown on the plan entitled "Recission Plan of Land in Harwich, Massachusetts, Rescinding of a Portion of Belmont Avenue as shown on the Plan Book 574, Page 5, and Plan Book 594, Page 59, dated October 16, 2018, prepared for Keith Lavalley and prepared by Demarest Land Surveying. The locus is shown on Map 77 between parcel A 20-1-9 and A 21-1-9, and is located in the R-R and W-R zoning districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell tonight before you with John Demarest, representing Keith Lavalley, who is under agreement to purchase the lots in question. You should have with your petition, everybody has a copy of the rescission plan?
Yep.
And it's also on the screen.
And that's on Belmont?
Very good.
Yep.
And we have pictures for you tonight.
Sure.
Color picture.
You've upped your game.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell.
Mainly of woods because it's an undeveloped lot.
Yeah, sir. Yeah, I know right where that is.
Yeah. Coming in off of Depot Street.
Yep.
Make a left off of Depot Street as you're going towards where it morphs from Depot Street into Slough Road when it gets to Brewster. Somewhere it becomes Slough Road.
Yeah.
And you make a left onto Belmont Ave. West, and you can see on the screen that the paper road extends down to Dock Bottom Pond, which is a great name.
Yep.
So the pictures are where you enter Osprey Hills, and then it would be over to the right. As the road bends to the left now, the lot would be off to the right. Some of these have been marked in red, but basically what you're looking at is, as I said, vacant lot, undeveloped lot, woods extending down to Round Pond, also known as Dock Bottom Pond.
This is right near Cape Cod fishing game.
Within earshot.
Yeah.
Yes. Up the street from it.
Yep.
Literally.
Lot of properties up there on Depot Street are within earshot of that. But it is near there, yes. So what Mr. Lavalley is trying to do is create one buildable lot by rescinding a portion of Belmont Avenue shown on the plan, and coming out with a lot that is 48,323 square feet, more or less, with 233.3 feet of frontage on Shore Street and Belmont Avenue West. This subdivision originated, and you probably know, back in the early 1900s, 1914, there was this subdivision of all these little tiny lots that have all been combined a period of time in order to create buildable lots. But the lots in question that we're talking about here are...
Bill, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
If you're not by... Yeah, you got to be near the mic, sorry.
So the lots in question actually come, made up of originally about 18 little lots.
Yes.
But that's commonplace in that subdivision up there.
Yeah.
Why they ever created these back in 1914, who knows? But it's created a, it's a subdivision plan that was recorded back then and by Louis Gordon, and we've had to deal with it ever since. The two plans that are referred to in the, in the agenda show, Plan Book 574, Page 5, and Plan Book 594, Page 59, show these lots already combined, the little lots. Now what we're seeking to do is rescind that section of Belmont Avenue so that we have one buildable lot. So as the result of the rescission, as you may know, in Massachusetts, when you buy a property that abuts a road, that's a private way, then you automatically own to the middle of the way, subject to the rights of others to use the way. Well, here, on the section we're seeking to rescind, the lot, the portion of the lot to the north and the south would be the only lots that would need to use that section of Belmont Avenue. Because, just because you're in the subdivision does not mean you have a right to use that rescinded portion. You only have a right to use a way in a subdivision to get out to a public road. So, as I said, the lots to the north and the south of that rescinded portion are the only lots that would need to use that section of Belmont Avenue. Also, in my title research, I've not found anything that says anywhere that anybody has any rights to get to the pond. So we're seeking to rescind that paper road, so-called, so that it no longer exists. Nobody can say that they have a right of way through a living room of a house that's constructed there and make this, make this go away, which makes sense to me. I mean, back then, maybe they intended to, and that's how they drew up subdivision plans. The one on Headwaters Drive, as you start down Headwaters Drive, is an old subdivision plan back in the 1940s by Genevieve and Wallace Bassett. And they had lots before subdivision control, and they sold them all out before, a lot of them out, before they put in the roads and the utilities. And the people left high and dry with paper roads, and the roads don't actually exist on the ground. So this is a paper road. It does not exist on the ground. That's the function of the pictures that I handed out. So we're seeking to have your approval, which you're allowed to do under the statute and under the Harwich Code. Through the regular plan approval process, you can amend or rescind an existing plan, which you've done in the past.
Yes.
So that's what we're asking you to do this evening.
Thank you very much. Charlene, any comments from the town of planning?
The only department that had really any comments, engineering and surveyor had no concerns or comments, police, no issue with this request that appears. The area, as it is now, is wooded and unimproved conservation. No concerns with the current application. Lot development will require conservation approval. Fire had no concerns. Highway had no concerns. The health agent had no concerns, however, in my notes down below, I do note that the health director has no concerns with the application. However, because this falls under subdivision control, full board of health review will be required for this rescission, and any conditions, requirements, those will need to be noted on the plan prior to endorsement by the board. Should not hold up any decisions that this board needs to make because it's not going to change the configuration or anything like that.
Right.
Additionally, this is a fairly straightforward request. A paper road exists between two lots. The road would be rescinded, and the portion of the paper road would be merged with the two lots to create the one larger building lot. And the waivers that are requested, of which there are several, I'll run through them very quickly. Two copies of drainage calculations, proposed road name, they're taking away a road, not adding, discs showing the subdivision, there really isn't one. Notation regarding a covenant, there's no need for covenant because nothing is going to be constructed. Notation stating board of health, that one will need to be done once the board of health has reviewed it. So I don't believe that item 28 in the list from Appendix 4B of Section 400 of the code would really need to be waived. A benchmark, there is a benchmark shown on the plan, which is consistent with NAVD 1988 benchmark. There is no other benchmarks elsewhere within the subdivision. There are no bearings and distances to mass coordinate system, so that's an appropriate waiver. And they've also asked for a waiver from items 49 through 63, which are the plan and profile. Obviously, they're taking away a road, so they don't need to provide for a plan and profile. So other than that, I have no other comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions or comments from the planning board? Joe?
Mr. Crowell, just a couple. First of all, a little piece of this is in Brewster, right? Looks like.
Yes.
Okay. Will you have to go to Brewster, too?
Hoping that it's a de minimis portion.
I just pointed out.
I mean, Brewster gets notified of this hearing, could have input.
And, and the paper street that you're getting rid of is nowhere near Brewster. I understand that.
Right.
My other question is, coming in off Depot Street, there are, looks like, a lot on either side of Belmont Avenue West. Is that correct?
There are, yes. That's, that's shown on some of the plans, the two plans that I mentioned, that are mentioned in the agenda item tonight, those two plans that I mentioned. They are, and, and the title in this subdivision is checkered also, so I can't say that those lots have, the lots you just mentioned, that they have clear title. But they are shown on plans.
And are owned by somebody.
Somebody's.
Buddies. I, I understand, I understand.
Heirs of this and that. The developers of that subdivision have spent decades acquiring interest from the heirs of people that died back in the early 1900s.
So that, once, if we act on this matter tonight and essentially remove the Belmont Avenue from your client's property?
Right.
Then, then he can, he, or she can build on that lot? And the frontage will be on?
Shore Street.
Shore Street. That's what I was...
Partly on Belmont Avenue West that is developed, and part, on Shore Street that's not developed, that's paper.
Well, that, that's also pa, I see. Okay, thank you.
So some of that is, is the, when you look at your pictures, some of that is an asphalt road. When you come in off of Depot Street on Belmont Avenue West, that's improved. Then you make a left, and that's all improved. To the right, that short section of Shore Street is unimproved.
Yep. Okay.
But provides frontage.
It also ties into Littlefield Pond Road that's developed.
When you go to the south.
I see it, yeah, yeah.
There are many houses down in there now.
But that ceases to be Littlefield Pond Road when it comes up to Shore Street.
Correct. There's a short section of Shore Street that goes into Belmont Avenue West. Thank you.
Chair?
Sir?
Just a point of clarification. I took a ride out there yesterday to familiarize myself, and the street signs out at Depot refer to this road that we are calling and that this map is showing Belmont Avenue West, but the street signs say Littlefield Pond Road, right off the, the street. So I didn't know from a legal perspective if we're rescinding things, if that needs to be, what, I guess what rules? The street sign that's physically out there or...
Take a look at the, the subdivision plan for Littlefield. This is the access coming in off of Depot. So you come in, you come in on Belmont Ave., the little section of...
Right.
Shore.
Shore, and then Littlefield Road continues down there, so, and that's all.
But the, what I'm, what I observed was, at the corner of Depot and what's referred to as Belmont Avenue West?
Yes.
Is a, I assume it's Town of Harwich Street sign that says Littlefield Pond Road. I didn't see... My educated guess is that's for consistency and clarification for 911 purposes and mailing address purposes. Instead of saying Belmont Ave. West, and then go left for a little bit, 100 feet on Shore Street, it's all known as Little, Littlefield Pond Road.
So from a legal perspective, and if we approve of this, the Belmont Avenue West is what we're rescinding?
Yes.
Or, or rules over the street sign that's on the corner?
Yes, yes. Because you go for plans.
Or whatever. Okay, and that's, so the plan rules?
Plan rules over, over street signs.
Okay.
Very often, most closings, I'll say, now, you're buying lot 14 on Smith Street, but it's known as 253 Smith Street. Call 911, that's what you give, not lot 14.
Yeah. Jim?
Okay, I just have a question, a clarification on what Craig just said. We're, we're not rescinding Belmont Avenue West.
Correct. Yeah, it's the dotted, the dash.
We're, we're rescinding Belmont Avenue.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
And so then, as a part of this transaction, we leave the street sign saying Littlefield Pond, and, and the map for the town is, still refers to Belmont, Belmont Avenue West, just that short little distance before it curves left? And that?
Yes.
Stays, if you will?
Yes.
This is Dave Harris. I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
On the map, it shows Belmont Avenue, which is being rescinded, and Belmont Avenue West, which will remain.
Correct.
Belmont, Belmont Avenue West is actually east of Belmont Avenue. Can we find?
There's too many commonsensical questions here.
It's, it's the new planning board approach, Bill.
Well, but that raises a good point, again, from...
Maybe when this was done, it was actually west.
Across the, the, the road directly across the street, the right-hand side, as you're looking at the map, is called Belmont Avenue.
Yes. Across Depot Street is Belmont Avenue.
So we need to make sure, or the documents that...
Oh, no, this is, as clear as can be, this plan of what is being rescinded.
Okay.
Because this needs to get recorded, so this would be the only portion of the road that gets rescinded.
So there'd be no question after we're dead and gone that somebody says Belmont West? Okay.
No, it's only what's shown on the plan on the dotted lines.
Exactly, Dave.
Good question, though.
Anything else, David?
Not on this.
Okay. Alan? Craig?
No, thank you.
Professor, anything from you?
No.
No, we're good?
Public.
Okay, public. Anybody in the public have any comments?
I have a question.
Could, could you please stand up and introduce yourself and ask away?
My name's Steve Padzka. I live on one Littlefield Pond Road.
What's your last name again?
Padzka. Padzka.
So this is your property. Your property actually shows up on that, on the bottom left-hand side, Steve?
Correct.
Okay.
And I guess, my, my question was, what address is this property? The only, the, my, the reason for the questioning is for confusion for the mailman or deliveries. If I'm number one, but there's a house in front of mine, what is that house? And is it on Lit, Littlefield Pond, or is it another street? I guess I'm not understanding the whole...
I don't know why you don't understand.
I think...
So I guess I don't feel so bad?
No, it's, it's very confusing.
I think, I think, Steve, what, you can see right to, to the edge of where your, where your property is, is Littlefield Pond, right?
Littlefield Pond Road.
Yeah, Littlefield Pond Road. And then as it, as it goes to, to your neighbor, right, it becomes Shore, Shore Street. And, and I, I mean, if I were you, I'd ask the same question. I don't know why the road changes names, but...
Yeah.
The current addresses are 3 and 4 Belmont Ave.
Right.
Okay.
Those are the two addresses.
So those are the two lots, then?
Correct.
Okay. So, what do you...
Ultimately, it will probably have a Belmont Ave. West or Shore Street address. It will be up to the assessors to, to assign a street number and exact street address. It's not going to be Littlefield Pond Road because you can't have a negative number for a street number.
Yeah, yeah.
Would imagine it'd be Shore Road.
It, it probably will be, but it's going to be up to the assessors to, to determine what it's going to be.
So what, what would happen, for exa, and Steve, I don't mean to ask your questions for you, but what, what happens, Charlene, to Steve and...
Nothing.
Nothing.
His, his address will stay the same. They wouldn't, they wouldn't change a whole road set of addresses.
Yeah.
They'll either have it as Belmont Ave. West or Shore Street.
I just had one other...
Go ahead.
Question. The lot that's actually next to us, just above where my lot is?
Yep.
We were told when we moved in that that was an unbuildable lot. It was something like a, something was put in there, a, a foundation was put in and had to be removed because of endangered species. I was just curious if that is part of this lot, or is that a separate? The whole, I guess the whole foundation was removed. This was before we moved in, and I'm just curious.
There was, there was a foundation that was in there, but there was also a plan that was done later showing the lot as, as a buildable lot, and I believe there were building permits issued for both lots?
Yes.
On either side of Belmont. And what the owners or the buyers intent, obviously, we talked about, was...
Buying both?
Buying both, rescind the road, build one house?
Yeah.
As opposed to two.
Does that, does that make sense?
Each lot, as they stand now, are more than likely buildable. The problem is you can only build a one-bedroom house on them.
Correct.
Right.
And that may be why it didn't go forward or make sense to somebody at the time to have a one-bedroom house. By combining these, they'll be able to have a four-bedroom house.
So that's the plan, combining, combine them and build one home?
Yes.
Yes. Joe, any other com, any other comments from the public? Okay. Joe?
What do you show as an address, sir? What do you use?
One...
One.
Little, Littlefield Pond.
Littlefield Pond Road. Thank you. Yeah.
I just was curious, that's all.
And that's, in, in my opinion, that's because the 1914 subdivision plan ended right here?
Yeah.
Which is where his lot is. Then you have a new subdivision plan for the lot to the south of that, which includes Mr. Padzka's lot, and that had a different name allotted to it when that plan was approved.
Yeah. I have a memory of seeing all those little chopped up things that you were looking at there on some prior case.
They're all up and down Depot Street, and there were tax takings by the town. It was a big hoopla 20 years ago.
There's some mess in there.
Yeah. Oh, boy. So we're past all of that, I'm hoping.
Getting there.
Trying.
Okay. So, are there any more questions from the planning board, or anything else from the public? So, do we have a move to motion? Motion, move to close?
Second.
I have to take a roll call because we've got a gentleman calling from Florida. So, all in favor? Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
I'm aye. David?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes carry it.
Move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the R-R and the Water Resource Zoning Districts. Two, a paper road would be rescinded as a result of this plan. Three, a lot would be created that meets the necessary zoning requirements. Four, no road construction would be required, thus negating the need for planning board covenant agreement.
Second.
Okay, again, we'll take a roll call vote. Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye, and David?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes carry it.
Move to approve the requested waivers pertaining to Appendix 4B of Section 400 of the Code of the Town of Harwich, as the rescission of a portion of Belmont Avenue West does not necessitate, necessitate that this information be provided.
Second.
Again, a roll call. All in favor? Craig?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Or Joe? Sorry. Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes carry. Next?
Move to approve the application for PB 2018-37.
Can you read number B? Number B, letter B?
Letter B.
Because there is a condition.
To approve with...
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
To approve with conditions, the application of PB 2018-37, Osprey Landing LLC owner Keith Lavalley, applicant for a rescission plan as set forth in Mass. General laws, Chapter 41, Section 81-K-GG, and Chapter 400-11.C., Article 2 of the Town Code, which would rescind a portion of the private road between 3 and 4 Belmont Ave. as shown on the plan entitled "Recission Plan of Land in Harwich, Mass., rescinding a portion of Belmont Ave. as shown on the Plan Book 574, Page 5, and Plan Book 594, Page 59, excuse me, dated October 16, 2018, revised November 15, 2018, prepared for Keith Lavalley and prepared by Demarest Land Surveying. Located as shown on Map 77 between parcel A 20-1-9 and A 21-1-9, and is located within the R-R and W-R zoning districts.
And the condition?
Board of Health conditions shall be noted on the rescission plan prior to endorsement.
Second.
All in favor by roll call? Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And in absentia, please, David?
Aye.
Uh, I'm aye as well, so the ayes carry it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Tell Mr. Lavalley he can come and fight his own battles anytime. Okay, um, next, we have New Business, the minutes from November 15th, 2018. A vote to approve.
To approve, I've reviewed them as chairman. They appear appropriate to me, and I move to approve the minutes.
No, second.
Okay.
I have a comment for a correction.
Okay.
On the second page, under, second paragraph, under meeting minutes.
Second page, under meeting minutes. Go ahead, David.
The last line, it says 5-0-0. It should be 4-0-1.
Oh, yeah, you abstained.
Really reads these.
Very good, very good. I read that and didn't catch it.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep. Yeah, actually, there, in every case, it's that way. It should be 5-0, 4-0-1.
No, 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 he only had to abstain on one.
On that one. Just that one?
Just that one.
Because he hadn't been here.
You weren't there.
I would add that the previous meeting minutes had voted in favor of approving that.
Yep, okay. We respect you. You're not, you're not Rodney. We respect you very much, David.
Move to adopt as am.
Okay, yeah.
Move to adopt as amended.
No, second.
Minutes. Okay, so we're going to take a roll call vote. Craig? Aye. Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Actually, Alan, you should abstain.
I read the.
You weren't at the meeting.
That's right.
Oh, that's, yep, sorry, Alan.
Sorry.
Or, or, David? You're right, Alan.
And I'll make sure it says.
Four.
Five dash zero dash one this time.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So the, the ayes carry that as well, so.
Yes.
Good shape. Um, old, sir?
I don't know if this New Business is the right place to bring this up. But I had a couple of questions that came to me recently. Obviously, not enough time to make the agenda. One is regards the A-frame signs, which I believe is now with our council for review. And do we have any regulations, or should we think about considering, I, sandwich boards, for lack of a better word, where not a fixed sign, but somebody walks around with a sandwich board? Because I would see that.
That's a good conversation to have on December 11th.
Yes. Okay?
Yep, yeah. Uh, the second question is, I know that the quasi mini park out by Station Two request for waivers was withdrawn without prejudice, and I think the chief was going to look for some cellphone data, and you were going to look for some cellphone data, and I wondered if we had that yet, and.
Still being gathered.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Is there anything else that should, anyone would like to bring up on New Business? Okay, we can proceed to Old Business. Heirs of Mark Nickerson at all? Charlene?
So the 20-day appeal, you may remember the board approved this plan back on October 23rd.
Yes.
And this has now gone through the 20-day appeal period. No appeals have been taken. Um, all required notes have been added to the plan, and we have an executed covenant from the applicant. And at this point, they are simply seeking the board's motion to endorse the plan and the covenant.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
And somebody can say so moved if they liked how eloquently.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a, a vote by roll call. Craig? Aye. Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Aye as well.
And even if you were not here to approve it, you can still endorse the plan. Craig cannot because we do not yet have his signature recorded with the proper entities. So you've got the original down there.
Yep.
If you want to start that with the special pen and, and put that around. And the covenant, actually, there's two pages that the board needs to.
Sign on.
Sign on.
Yep.
So if we start with you, Joe.
Sure.
So this page and the next page.
Charlie, will I sign this while I get back?
No, you don't need to. We're good on the number of signatures. And actually, I did get Mary to sign it this afternoon.
Perfect.
Even though she's not here, she's still entitled to, to sign the plan.
I can't sign.
And I do need.
Uh, my signature hasn't been approved by somebody.
Okay, I'll take the secret pen.
It's not so secret.
The special pen. So the board's next meeting is December 11th, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
And at this point, we have sent the, the zoning items to council for review. Um, I have asked for comments back for that meeting. So that meeting at this point will pretty much be discussion on zoning stuff.
Great, that's great.
Yeah, so I, I think that'll be good. I mean, if we get any applications in between now and then for an A&R or anything like that, we'll obviously add those to the agenda.
Are, are we planning on another meeting before the end of the year, Charlene, or?
You do have one scheduled for Thursday, the 20th.
Yes.
And if need be, you know, it's entirely up to you guys whether we have it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm certainly not adverse to having a meeting because we won't have another one until the second.
Second week in January.
In January. So I think keeping the momentum going on the discussion of the zoning is, is not a bad thing.
No, I, I would agree, and do we, does anyone on the board have any comments about that? I mean, is anyone planning to be out of town or away on the 20th of December?
Is the meeting the 20th or the 18th?
I think we did it on a Thursday because of conflicts on the 8th. We didn't want to have two weeks solid, or a week in a row, so we offset it a little bit.
And the only reason I ask is I am going to be out of town on the 18th, but I'll be here on the 20th.
Yep. Yeah, the 20th is a Thursday.
Yep.
11th is a Thursday.
11th is a Tuesday, and the 20th is a Thursday. We just didn't want to have it right back to back. We wanted a little separation when we did the schedule last year.
Yep, yeah, okay.
So the meeting is on December?
Next meeting is the 11th.
11th?
Which is a Tuesday.
A Tuesday.
And then what?
And then the 20th, which is a Thursday, Joe.
Thanks.
You got it. Okay, so.
So we're going to skip the 25th?
Yeah, I figured you guys didn't want to meet on Christmas.
I was just checking, just checking.
Unless you'd like to comment, you know?
Ho, ho, ho.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, that was. That's good, so, okay, so, um, is there anything else, Charlene, that?
I have nothing else.
What's that, what's the name of that committee that, that I'm on with Rich?
Oh, Capital Outlay Committee.
Capital Outlay is meeting Thursday?
Thursday.
Of this week, basically, the only reason I'm reporting it because, uh, we'll be making essentially our final.
Yep.
Recommendations we'll vote on.
Actually, Joe, you, you, they did it at the last meeting that you were not able to attend.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What are we meeting Thursday for?
Just to do an overview, to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
Yep.
Do, do you need us there, Joe? Is there, I mean, is there anything you need?
Not at all.
We're. And we certainly.
And they did vote to support the, um, the funds for the update of the local comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Yeah, the Community Preservation Committee will be having its December meeting on the 13th of December, Thursday night at six o'clock. I think it will probably be in this room. Uh, we will be reviewing four more applications for funding, which means after that meeting's over, we will have reviewed all the applications for funding. The consideration and the vote on the applications will be then scheduled for a meeting in January.
And how many do you have?
We have eight applications. So we reviewed four at the November meeting, and we're reviewing the other four.
So you review a total of eight?
We'll review a total of, we, yeah, we've already reviewed four. So, and we're going to review the other four on December 13th.
And if your board chooses to, and I understand the authority, if your board chooses to, do you have enough money?
Yes.
To give everybody what they're looking for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Craig, I think you have a comment.
Just a follow-up on what I mentioned. Last meeting was the Planning Training Collaborative, Planning for, Planning with Community Support, and I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago.
And can I steal that because we can't find the one that we made a copy of?
And I've been trying to get electronic copies, and I finally got a response today that they don't give out electronic versions because they don't want the document shared with anyone who was not, that did not attend the training class. However, you received a paper document. What you choose to do with it is up to you. It's not copyrighted material, so we're not going to get you an electronic copy, but we'll get you paper copies. And as I mentioned at the last meeting. Yeah, I, well, I think it's helpful as we go into the comprehensive planning.
And even the zoning discussions that we're going to be having.
Right, yeah, so.
No, I will make sure everybody gets a copy of that for the 11th, and Dave will send you one, um, in the mail.
Just like, did it just find our training collaborative?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
The only, the only other thing I had was a question, I guess, to Charlene, the Harwich Center.
Initiative.
Initiative and the Harwich Parking Initiative.
Harwich Port Parking Committee.
Thank you. And you luckily are the.
Well, I'm on the parking committee. I don't think I'm on the initiative, but I'm apparently still supposed to go to their meetings and help them, so. Uh, they had a meeting today. I could not attend.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, because I recall it either last night or the previous selectmen meeting, they, I think they said they had a total of four appointees, but a couple of more openings. They were going to go ahead and start their meetings anyway, and I wondered if anybody heard anything about it.
No, they did have their meeting today. I don't know. As they organize, they're still waiting for the, the remainder of appointments to be made, as I understand it.
And they're going to coordinate.
Charlene, it's Dave. I will be available by phone for the meeting on the 11th.
You will?
But I will, I will be back in Harwich for the meeting on the 20th. So if there's any package to be mailed to the 11th, please send it to my Florida address.
Okay.
Anything going out for the meeting on the 20th, send it to my Harwich support manager.
Okay, you're just making this so confusing.
I'll send you an email confirming all that, so, because I know you're pretty capable.
Perfect, perfect.
Yep.
A copy Elaine in too, if you would, please.
Okay, well, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just, sir, for the record, uh, we had a member, as I understand it, we have two vacancies.
For alternates.
For alternates.
Correct, yes.
And we had a member on this board for a long period of time, and unfortunately, she had to resign because her husband became ill, uh, and she just couldn't do it. She has since sadly lost her husband, uh, and I believe, given appropriate time, her name is Joan Kozar, and, uh, given appropriate time, um, the board of selectmen should consider Ms. Kozar to be re-appointed to our board. She was a great member of our board.
She would have to reapply?
Does she apply?
She has to do an application.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Well, I think Larry's been working on her too.
I, I'm, uh.
And every time I see her, I sort of hint about it.
I think that would be a great.
Yeah, she would be an excellent addition to the board. She was an excellent member of the board when she was on the board.
I, I had one meeting with her before she.
We had a whole big project in East Howard, and she, by the time she got done putting that together, she had a pile, like.
Oh, sure.
She did an excellent job on that.
I, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. I'm, I think we.
We'd be lucky to get her back if we can.
That'd be great, perfect.
Joe, have you talked to her? Is she interested?
Now, I haven't, but Jim has.
Yeah, I've mentioned it a few times, although not recently, and the few times I mentioned it, she sort of implied that she wasn't ready yet. But again, I haven't seen her probably for about a month and a half or two months.
Yeah, well, I, I raised the ten me too when I saw her, but I have a sense about eight, six or eight months ago. And she, I said, we miss you, and she said, well, it's too early. So, you know, time will heal that wound, and hopefully she will agree to come back.
Okay, it, has anyone talked with anyone else? Because there are two positions, actually, two alternate positions, and if we could get.
I, I mention it to folks all the time when they come in and express interest or ask questions, and I go, well, you know, there are openings on the planning board.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, let's not forget that, right? I'm glad, thank you very much, Joe and Jim. I, it's, it's, that's great, and I'm glad people are starting to show interest in, in, in this and serving their town because it's a, it's a, it's something I think people should do, and it can be really productive and a lot of fun, I can tell you that.
Jim, and I think it's also extremely important as we start entering on a comprehensive planning effort that we have quality people on the board. We're just going to have to take leadership of that effort with Charlene's assistance. And, you know, we need to encourage, you know, good people to fill their vacancies on this board.
I agree. I mean, we've got a, I think one of the things that, that's important is that we demonstrate what we're trying to do and work with people and, and do this the right way. And, and we're doing that, and I'm very proud of all of the work that each of you has done. And, and I do think that your point is well-taken, Jim, and thank you. We really do need to get after this and make sure we have a lot of input.
Definitely.
So.
That's the only way it's going to work.
That's correct, so thank you very much. And there, is there anything else anyone has?
Motion to the meeting adjourned.
Second.
All in favor by roll call. Craig? Aye. Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Looking forward to seeing you soon. I'm in favor. Meeting is adjourned.